Okay, let's start the meeting, the Board of Supervisors for Warminster Township on Thursday, October sixth, 2022. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the fact of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our servicemen and women and civilians serving overseas. Thank you. Okay, so announcements, we had a executive session right before the meeting, we went over personnel issues, litigation, and that's it?
Yep.
Yep, okay. Welcome back, it's October, it's getting darker and darker. Please remember to watch the schoolchildren coming out of school and slow down on all the side roads. That's all I have, thank you. Kathy?
I have no announcements in this meeting, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have some announcements from Park and Rec. Discounted amusement park tickets, Regal movie cinema movie tickets, bark park passes and dog licenses are now on sale at Park and Recreation, which is here at 401 Gibson Avenue, Monday through Friday, or at the WCP location Tuesdays from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m., Thursdays and Fridays from 1:00 to 4:15 p.m. So there's a little bit of change there, most of our Park and Rec business is being done right here in this township building, so if you have business with Park and Rec, it'd be best to come here, but there's other hours over there. The annual Park and Recreation Golf Outing is this coming Monday, October the 10th, at Five Ponds, and Park and Rec would like to thank the sponsors, Gilmore and Associates, Flagler and Associates, Hatboro Federal Savings, Warminster Municipal Authority, T and M Associates, O'Neill Buick, GMC, Nissan, PFM Asset Management, First National Bank of Newtown, MyLex Construction, Nova Care, Citizens for a Better Warminster, it's yours truly, Holiday Inn, Joe Fit, M&amp;H Custom Painting, Warminster Amateur Radio Club, Warminster Rotary Club, CP Printing, Modern Auto, and Nancy's Farm, and that's this Monday, I believe Mr. Kennedy are playing in it, a couple of you guys are playing in it, so I hope you get good weather.
It's supposed to be nice.
Yeah, usually rains every year for me, so it's good to hear they're gonna have good weather.
Yeah, it's gonna be sunny out here.
And a few upcoming events is the Fresh Connect food box distribution continues on Tuesdays from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the rec parking lot, which is in WCP. Visit the Bucks County Opportunity Council for eligibility and pre-registration. October events, as I mentioned, the golf outing is on Monday. October 22nd, a biggie, touch a truck from 10:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. on the community park out on the runway. October 24th, get to know your Medicare options at the rec from 68 to 8:00 p.m., pre-registration is required for that one. October 29th is a free shredding event, limit three boxes, on the runway again at Community Park. And I think the last one I have is November 5th is the Senior Holiday Pop-Up Market at Community Park from 8:00 to 2:00, which is a good one as well. The only other one I have, Mr. Chairman, is this is, I think this is the third time they're doing it, and it's sponsored by the Warminster Historical Society, it's the annual Sippin' Shop, which they have over at Five Ponds. It's been so successful, they usually get around 40 vendors, that they set a tent up outside for vendors as well. And it's a whole holiday vendors and some really nice vendors, they've actually moved it to Saturday and Sunday, two days, it'll be November the 19th and Sunday, November the 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and that's over at Five Ponds Golf Course, it's a really nice event, it's a Sippin' Shop, a lot of nice vendors, get your holiday shopping done early. And also, I believe October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Just want to mention, all you gals, how about scheduling your mammograms and getting it out of the way before the holidays? As a cancer survivor, I know how important that is, and that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mark. Judy?
It's important for men to have mammograms sometimes, too, once in a while, by the way. So, yeah, I want to let you know about some library events that are coming in October. There's lots of book club events going on at the library, the library is very busy now, they're putting together great programs under their new director, and on Thursday, October 6th, they're having an adult nonfiction book club meeting. On the 15th, they're having the movie Hotel Transylvania, for, that's appropriate for Halloween, right? And then on the 20th, they're having an adult book to movie book club, so they're having several other artistic issues in between, too, and that's for adults, and then for the family nights, they're having a Halloween Storytime and Parade on Tuesday, October 25th at 10:30 a.m., and on Thursday, October 27th at 10:30 a.m. And a make and take pumpkin painting on October 26th at 4:00 p.m. So I hope that you can join in these activities with the, there's lots of activities for the library, lots more, I know you don't want me to read a newsletter to you, so, but you can always phone in the library at 215-672-4362, 672-4362, and see what they have to offer, I'm sure you'd be delighted.
Thanks, Judy. Janice?
I just wanted to say happy Thursday, and it's nice to see our firefighters here in the building, this is Fire Prevention Week, so I would encourage everyone to pay attention when they speak today, so that you can remember to check your smoke detectors, oops, sorry, that was last week. Oh, and yes, and on the, on the 8th at Nativity from 10:00 to 1:00, they have a presentation over at Nativity or Lord Church, so thank you very much, nice to have you here.
Thank you, Janice. Okay, there's no presentations, so we'll go to land use. I think Scott, you could have it for?
We will start with item 3B, actually, this is, was it 9 or forget set up? This is a conditional use application from Plumstead Manor LLC for the property 114 to 120 Evergreen Avenue. The applicant has requested this matter be continued to a date certain, that date would be November 3rd, 2022. The next Board of Supervisors meeting, the reason is there was some personal issues that the developer, property owner had that conflicted with today, we obviously were just, this is one of the items we did discuss in executive sessions, there's other litigation matters involved with this, so you're aware of what that issue was, we would just need a motion to accept the continuance.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any questions from the board, questions from the public? Okay, let's call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0.
And that'll end our matter for tonight, the contingent, the conditional use hearing will be continued to November 3rd, 2022 at 7:00 p.m., right here again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, ASG Capital.
Yes, so this is a application for preliminary and final land development from ASG Capital for the property at 720 Johnsville Boulevard, excuse me, this is the Franklin Corporate Center, Lot Number Three.
Hello, thanks for having us today, my name is Mark Thompson, I'm the civil engineer on the project over at Telar, Weis and Taylor. We also have Peter Gebhardt from Franklin Realty, they're a property owner, and we have Raju from ASG Capital, who is currently managing the project. I do have handouts.
Sure, sure, we like those.
Mark?
Yes?
Just let me know which ones you want to see on the screen.
Do you want to start with the site plan rendering?
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
That's in the panel, too.
That's my.
All right, so as you know, Franklin Corporate Center is a mixed-use development located at the former U.S. Naval Air Development Center. We're talking about Lot Three here. Lot Three was originally approved, previously approved and had a total of 13 office buildings approved on the site. To date, there have been nine constructed, and we are now proposing to construct a larger 117,000 square foot light manufacturing warehouse building in place of four office buildings that were originally planned for that area. So we're, we were trying to utilize, you know, the existing driveway connections around the building and the parking, and trying to make it as less disruptive to the existing tents as possible. We do have a new entrance drive off of Johnsville Boulevard, which you can see on the bottom of that rendering there. That's mainly for loading vehicles or larger trucks for our loading areas, they can go in behind the building and load off of the trucks in the back. We do have some building elevations and floor plans also, if you want to put up the...
Elevator cam or elevation?
Build the elevation first. So as you see, we're proposing a two-story building, there's different types of masonry, trying to mimic the existing buildings on site, most of the buildings, all the buildings on site are one-story, this will be a two-story, though, we still comply with all the zoning requirements and height included, so if you want to turn to the exterior rendering, the 3D rendering, I think that's, yeah, there you go, sorry. This is just a view from the street, actually from the parking area. Yeah, we think it's a nice building, you can see the three different, three different tones and colors in there for the building and, yeah. Sorry, if you want to go to the floor plan, and I can, Raj, if you want to come up and talk about the floor plan, or do you, yeah, so, sorry, this is Raj, Raju, he works, or he's Amsterdam Light Sciences or ASG Capital, and he's gonna be doing the work on the site, so he's gonna be running it, so talk about what you're producing there.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. President.
Hey, maybe a couple of years down the road, as you mentioned about the community events and the sponsorship, who would like to be one of the sponsors?
Look forward to it.
We'd love to look forward.
That's frustrating.
It's, it's an exciting project, you know, I've been living in Bucks County area for the last 20-plus years, and I do have a business on Lewis Drive, Douglas Pharmaceuticals Building, which I started, and, and this is much more, bigger project, and we want to build this to manufacture injectable pharmaceutical products, both for oncology and non-oncology, cancer, all those things, and want to bring state-of-the-art technology, and actually, there are so many activities going on in parallel while you are reviewing some of these documents about ordering, as you know, there are, because of the logistics and all this stuff going on in the world, we have to order some of this equipment ahead of time, and our goal is to, we call your approval, we want to complete the construction in the second quarter of next year, by the time, we want to bring all this equipment, which we already ordered, at least approximately 20 to 25 million dollar worth of equipment, we already started ordering them, and they are lining up and coming sometime in March, April, May timeframe, so we are very serious, we want to get this going, we want to get this done today, but, but we are, we are planning very well, and it's going to bring at least 150, 100, 150 to 200 employees for a period of five to seven years, and a lot of visibility, we're attracting some of the major players in pharmaceutical industry, like Pfizer, so the world, they will be visiting us, using our services, although we are developing generic products, we are also planning to offer our services to some of these major players in pharmaceutical sector. So we're all very excited, and again, this is a great township, there's so much, you know, I've been the last several years, yeah, great help, especially for small businesses, and I have seen that in my previous business, and I'm, and thank you very much for all your help, and we are progressing very well. I'm hoping that probably in November, December timeframe, we'll have a groundbreaking ceremony, we all love to, we'd love to invite you all and...
I'll be there.
We'll be there.
Definitely see this, what's going on, stuff like that, but other than that, everything else coming along well and...
So when you do the groundbreaking, you have, everyone, we have an open house and we can see the equipment and...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
There will be, there will be a small, actually, I haven't explained to you, in front of this site, we already bought one building, and, and Franklin Group, it is adjacent to this building, what we are building.
No, they weren't...
That's where we will have our R and D and our administration.
Oh, okay.
So definitely, you will have a chance to visit that and witness this, and we'd like to have a small celebration and love to have you all.
We'd love to celebrate. Thank you.
That's actually one thing I wanted to clarify, Raj, you said, you said you'd have around 120 employees. At this, at this building, we anticipate only about 60 employees, the other employees would be in the adjacent building, within the campus, but not at this warehouse facility, so.
So they'd be taking up the entire building? That's fantastic.
Yes.
The office space on the second floor as well?
Yes, ASG would have the office space on the second floor, yes.
It's aesthetically very, very nice looking, and it definitely fits in Johnsville Boulevard, and to have, you know, scientific with Pfizer and who knows what might be discovered in Warminster, right, with oncology, I'm right there, that's right, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Just want to thank you for...
Very interesting, thank you.
Keeping your business in Warminster, will you be keeping the other facility as well on Lewis Drive?
Yes, actually, starting the rubber, we are planning to do some argue of...
Ah, great, great, so I just want to say thank you for keeping your business in Warminster and bringing more employees here in a nice, really nice development. Peter, I didn't mean to say hi earlier, thanks for bringing this in, very nice.
Thank you. And I do have one more thing, if you don't mind pulling back up the site plan rendering. So as we discussed, this site was previously approved and constructed, assuming full buildout of 13 office buildings. The site was built and designed in accordance within the Shamity Creek Watershed Stormwater Management Ordinance and Act 167 Plan. Our proposed development of this 117,000 square foot warehouse building will further reduce both the rate and volume of runoff from what leaves the site today. We are proposing two underground infiltration basins in our, basically, under our driveways, under our loading area, to reduce the stormwater management. So we discussed this with township engineer, and we believe we comply, we meet all the stormwater concerns that were previously there, so we're going to be removing that waiver request from...
Yeah, that would be the last waiver in your pocket, the resolution has been prepared without that, we figured that's how it would get resolved, my staff worked with Mark and his staff, and that waiver is no longer needed for stormwater management, so I believe all other items are, will comply then, from the applicant?
There's two comments I do want to touch base on, the first one was in the Emergency Management Services, they have requested 26-foot wide drive aisles for all the roadways around, for all the driveways around our building. Anywhere where we're touching the driveway here, we are meeting that 26 feet, so we are extending, widening the road to account for that.
That's good.
Okay. All right, so you have no issues with that?
Excuse me one second, please.
There's, there's, there's nothing here other than one page for this, there's no, there's your letters or no one else's letters right here.
We have, so we have a list of waivers on...
I think some of the comment letters.
Yeah, the comment letters. I don't have it, I can't find it either.
The share thing either.
Yeah, the only thing I have is the...
Planning Commission zoning.
From T and M.
Well, I should have...
Do you have the Gilmore, I'm dragging this to you, do you have the, your letter dated September the 9th with you?
Yes.
September 22nd?
22nd.
I don't have it.
I have the 22nd, I have that, this is what I have.
Yeah, but that's from T and M.
Right, that's from T and M, so this is it, right.
That's all we have, it's just the letter, we don't have any other letters.
That's all we have.
You don't have a letter, you have a memo from them, probably.
Yeah.
So their letter is September 23rd, Carol's is September 13th, ours is September 22nd. Looks like you don't have that.
Right.
Do you have the proposed resolution from Scott's office?
No.
No.
Is that it?
Yeah. I thought I was missing some paperwork, I'm looking around, all right, now I'm lost.
We're all like looking.
Is there a way we can, well, do we want to, can we move this back, back of the, later in the agenda, we'll print some stuff out later?
I'm all right.
Actually...
If you want me to go through it, if you still have questions.
Yeah, why don't you go through it?
So, you had one more comment, so the stormwater waiver was removed, we already knew that staff level, so we prepared your, Scott prepared your pool without that, and then the other, you said the fire marshal, you're okay with the 26 feet?
We're providing 26 where we can.
Okay, so that's fine.
That's what I was saying, yeah. And then the other one was in the Carroll review, they asked for a traffic impact statement. Our argument is that we're actually reducing the traffic, with the 16-employee building, we're gonna have less impact than what was previously approved, so, but everything...
And I'm okay with that, I think your resolution references all the conditions, so I agree, I mean, I've worked with Mr. Gebhardt for 15 years on this, and finally got an applicant that, you know, can proceed, I don't have issues with the traffic, it's probably just a general comment from them about, because it's a new use, but I didn't anticipate any traffic study being prepared for this, so we can amend that then?
Yeah, we can amend the resolution.
To remove the traffic impact study.
So originally, it was two office spaces?
Four.
Four.
4,000, so four office spaces.
Okay, so, so now you're, so you're reducing the park, the amount of parking spaces because it's one building now?
Yes, they actually reduced that.
So then you are reducing the traffic.
So less impervious surface center, correct?
Yeah, so overall, from a stormwater impervious, traffic, everything's improved on this layout versus the previously approved, so I kind of look at it as they're kind of grandfathered on that prior approval, and they're actually reducing all the impacts to the, to the community in the area, so...
Well, we appreciate the, the stormwater, that's, that's a huge issue here, because for years, everyone went the other way, now we're faced with problems every time it rains, and I appreciate that help.
Do you have any other?
No, everything else on the list.
So everything else, it will comply, all right, so we have that one traffic comment that Scott will take care of, I don't have any other issues, the one issue I was gonna talk about with stormwater, but we really resolved that, you know, like I said, I've been involved for the last 15 years with this, I think a couple of board members have through different committees, and I think this is a great layout and, and a much better plan than what we saw a few, you know, a few years ago, and even five or 10, it was hard for Mr. Gebhardt and Franklin Corp. to, to fill out all the general office, so I think this is a, a much better use all around for the community, and...
Looks great.
I have no other comments, I think we just discussed the couple that, that we all were working at staff level, so...
Well, we knew you were working it.
Yeah, we did, we were working this afternoon.
We knew you guys were communicating or anything, and just didn't see it here, that's...
I'm comfortable with you, they're requesting preliminary final tonight, I recommend that, the resolution was prepared as such, and I'll turn it over to Scott for any other comments.
Okay. Yeah, and outside those, the change we're gonna make with regards to the traffic, every other announcement, resolution was off the park?
Yes.
All right, in that case...
Well, based on the report tonight, I'll make a motion that we accept the preliminary.
Second.
Preliminary final.
The resolution.
With the changes, with the changes.
With the changes, I'll second.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments from the board?
Nope.
Any questions from the public? Okay, well, let's call a question then, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, looking forward to stopping in and seeing the finished product.
Thank you.
Peter, thank you.
You persuade all your time.
My pleasure.
All through all years.
Yeah.
You're wearing me out.
And Mark, you're wearing me out. Peter's been here a few times before. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, our pleasure.
Good night.
Sure. All right, I think that covers land development tonight. So we'll go right to public comment, I see we have some, some of our volunteer fire company here. Well, there's really nobody else here tonight, Mitch.
Ladies and gentlemen, how are you doing tonight?
It's okay.
Janice stole part of my thunder.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to let everybody know that this is Fire Prevention Month, and Saturday we'll be at Nativity in the rear lot, we'll also be doing Touch a Truck in coordination with the township, as well as there's a Hero Scholarship outing coming up, we'll be landing the helicopter for that, as well as doing all the fire prevention, along with the fire marshal for all the schools and daycares in the township, so to kind of get our message out.
Where's the helicopter landing, will it be in the park or?
Gee, well, we're, we're landing one helicopter over at Nativity in the soccer fields.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then, and yeah, one for the touch a truck as well, and do you have another one?
Where's the touch a truck gonna be in the park?
Okay, it was just those two helicopters, I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks.
We did a recruitment drive, Hartsville did a Facebook Live, which garnered one interest, and they didn't even live in Warminster, I don't know if anybody saw our billboard we put up, it's street near...
I saw it, we did.
It was, nobody else thought it was, zero.
Mm-hmm.
We were gonna push it to two, but we backed off, if we do another month, we're gonna see if we can move it to the electronic billboard or put it elsewhere, because, yeah, no one, we were kind of disappointed, we even checked the email and the phone number to make sure it was really working a couple times.
I was excited.
We thought, I mean, I didn't expect it to ring off the hook, but I thought we'd at least get interest.
Yeah.
You know, if somebody would at least inquire, if they didn't even join, that we'd get the message out, but nothing, nothing.
It's unfortunate, but it's nice to see that that was out there.
And since COVID, I can say, Hartsville, you got zero, they got zero new firefighters since COVID, we have picked up six since then.
That's good.
But none of them are for daytime, they all have jobs, and they live here, a couple are juniors, so we'll see how that pans out, that's always iffy, school gets in the way and life gets in the way, and by the time they're half-trained, they move on, but unfortunately, we keep trucking along, which leads me to the, we'll call it the State of the Union for another year. Last time we spoke, I was here October of last year, we talked about our situation, it definitely hasn't gotten any better, we're still minimum manning, we're getting out, short-staffed, with guys that are in their 60s, you know, we have one young guy who happens to be around during the day, so it's kind of disappointing that we're, we're running very light, we're trying to do our best to get out, but it's, unfortunately, it's taxing. We've also been tasked more with squad calls, with the crisis of EMS as well, any cardiac arrest in township, as well as lift assists, we're being dispatched for those, and we've had like three of them this week so far, which is also tasking our volunteers during the day, and it's, it's getting hard for the guys that do come to get up, as well as, no one's really home during the day, it's the few that work night work that come, or one that does work shift or swing shift, there's a state trooper, he's around, so whenever he's off those days, he tries to come. So we did do that, I guess we did have a meeting with the manager, unfortunately, it was not productive, we did look at and knew a green, well, last time we talked, we thought we'd be standing here at Christmas last year, unfortunately, we are, we are standing here now, and I guess with nothing in sight. When we talked about the $1.8 million grant, we're now two years into a three-year grant, and we're losing money every year. When we did the grant in 2022 this year, three firefighters were awarded out of Pennsylvania, in 2021, there was two, and in 2022, I'm sorry, I think I reversed the years, I'm sorry, in 2020, we were one of five to get it, so unfortunately, with us not using this grant, we'll never receive that again moving forward as the township grows and tries to build out its emergency services. And when we talked about the grant with the manager, we were basically, well, first of all, it's a shame there wasn't a better line of communication all along for the past year, that when we did meet in the beginning of the year, they were gonna revise the contract and get back to us. When we finally did meet and found that you guys had no intention on moving forward with it, it would have been nice to at least been informed at some point that the board was gonna turn the grant back in, basically, and not move forward, and, and I'm not sure where those discussions happened, because from watching the meetings, it never was discussed at this table, so I'm not sure how these meetings go and how you guys make these decisions. But on the same note, when we did ask why, and we talked about the salary, we're basically told the salary's not the problem, it's the post-retirement benefits, and they didn't want to have another collective bargaining unit, which I was kind of, first of all, we don't know if there is gonna be one, but if there is, with so many union members on the board, I was kind of surprised to hear that. His only answer was really, I don't know if it's been revised, but a $300 tax break for some crazy... His only answer was really, I don't know if it's been revised, but a $300 tax break for some crazy amount of hours during the day. You know, we'll continue to be here for the residents. You know, we're doing the best we can with what we got. But you know, at the end of the day, I don't know where this goes. You know, we're, we've asked, unfortunately, you know, we're doing what we can. All we did wrong is show up and say we have a problem. And we feel like we were just kicked in the gut professionally and personally. You know, there's just no respect for us from the board and it's quite sad that it's come to this. And like I said, we're here for the residents. We do this because we love it and we want to help our neighbors. I, I just don't know what it's going to take. Someone to die of a heart attack because we don't get there, someone to die in a fire. It, it's just sad that we're wasting this grant that was such an opportunity to us. We tried to make concessions wherever we could, but there again, everything was done in a vacuum without including the fire department. I don't, I don't really what else to ask you guys for, you know, because it goes nowhere. Unless you have something for me, I really have nothing to add, other than disappointment.
No, we're working on our budget again. And as far as communication, you know, I guess we'll keep you in the loop.
I'd appreciate it. The last thing I'll leave you guys, in case you're unaware of it, the State House adopted SR6, or they wrote SR6, the, the final report for the emergency services. I don't know if you've seen it or not seen it, but it basically goes over the whole crisis in Pennsylvania, things that can be done, some of their ideas, which we've basically kind of tried to do here. And the responsibility of a second-class township to provide fire protection, it's not ours. We're here as volunteers. It's you, five of you sitting on this.
Do you have one right there?
I brought one forward.
Can I say it?
You absolutely can. I dog-eared the pages that are of importance for you guys as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this came from the, from the state Harrisburg?
Thank you.
So what's their solution? Leave it on, leave it on the townships that have no money?
Absolutely.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Right, that's nice of them.
Yeah.
So, so our elected officials in Harrisburg said, oh yeah, there's a problem and we'll let the townships who don't have any money deal with it, right?
I can give you a little bit. They, they have talked about allowing to raise the fire tax higher, allowing for a second mill. It's in the works. I don't know if it'll get approved before this session ends to raise the, the two, up to two mills for hiring firefighters. So we'll see where that goes. I mean, that would certainly be a big help.
Yeah, actually for our township, it, it shouldn't be two mills. It should be much more, because.
I completely agree. There's been talk of having a, like you have a water authority. They, they don't want to call it an authority, but they would have a book, for lack of a better word, a fire district or a fire authority.
And, and I heard that, but I didn't know that it applied to, to township municipal authorities. I thought it was strictly for, I, I acquired about that.
Yeah, no, our fire marshal Val has been one of the big players in pushing that through. That was one of his, you know, ideas. And if, who knows how long that'll take to come to fruition, but then, you know, you could put together, we could be our own fire district here and levy funds for it as needed, just like the water authority, which would take some of the burden away from the supervisors.
I did hear that, but I thought there was some restrictions that we couldn't do that here as a township. Didn't it have to be regional?
Uh, I, I did, and we did talk about that and that did come up. And Warminster could be its own regional department.
Its own regional department?
That's interesting.
So, so we would have, so we could actually pay for, first of all, it has nothing to do with collective bargaining. It has everything to do with, we have $14 million. Mitch, we've been through this a million times. Now hold.
No, no, I'm just moving this because it's falling closer to my mouth.
No, because, yeah, yeah, here we go. But, you know, I, I just went through this with a lot of different people, that we have $14 million. That's all we have. And, and 80% of it goes to the police department and the rest gets spread out. And we used to have a surplus, but it got flushed down the toilet. And all the development that happened in this township, because this township's developed out like Abington and everywhere else, all that money was used to operate the township rather than, to have forethought. So, so my, my always thing is, I agree, and if we can do that, if, if, is that going to pass at any time?
I don't know.
Well, and that's the problem, because they, they, they say, oh yeah, we got a problem, but we don't have any, we don't, they don't give us the resources to, to enact it. And that grant, after three years, bankrupts the township. Because, and because we can only put one mill towards payroll. If we could put four mills towards payroll, then we, it would be easy enough.
It would be. It would absolutely be. One mill, from what I understand, brings in $344,571 this year.
That's correct.
That would absolutely, well.
It won't find five.
It will not.
Right.
It will not. And we've talked about that. I mean, look, at this point, I'm, I'm saying five is ideal, but zero's not. If we have to go to four, we have to go to four temporarily. But when we originally talked about this and, and we did that long-term planning, we were putting away that $344,000 for three years, having that, you know, $1.4 million in the bank.
In, in the bank and, and I'm not, and that was something that was done with, with the previous manager. But we're still, the more I, the more we look at that, we're still only allowed to spend one mill.
Well, so we had $344,000 plus the grant. That was going to push us out if we dropped to four. I think it took us like nine or 10 years.
No, it did not. It was only, it was only, no, it was not.
It was pretty far. It was like seven to nine years. We'll go with that.
No, I won't. It was, it was at the most, at the very most, five. That was it. Because, because what we were faced with would have been two years from now, is laying off firefighters, because we couldn't afford it.
If we would go with the four, take the three, something that we have, that we're putting away, and we started taking the grant, you would have another three, four years after that of salary put away with the current 300 every year between, we've talked about this.
Yeah, but you're, you're only allowed to spend one mill.
I understand. Well, we also have the.
So how is that?
Inspection fees on top of it. So with the inspection fees, we're up close to half a million dollars, give or take.
You were opposed to inspections, to firefighters doing the inspections as well?
No, they were always going to do inspections. There was never a time when they weren't, but their primary function would be firefighters. No, they were always going to do inspections. They weren't going to sit in a firehouse all day.
Do you remember that?
But they were going to be four on a fire truck and one in the car. Thank you. I know, I mean, I, I forget a lot of things. Ask my wife, but that I do remember.
Yeah, I'm told I forget everything too, Mitch, but I remember it was, I, I remember it was only going to take us out to five years and then we were going to have to furlough firefighters and that is not.
That is not the answer. I agree.
First of all, I was never going to hire people and in knowing, knowing already that in five years they were going to go.
And did we ever reply back to the, to safer?
Yeah, we did.
Did we get an extension?
Yeah, we have an extension.
To when? See, there, here we are, vacuum again.
I don't know, because what, what, what we're hoping and, you know, and you guys, you know, did anybody go to Harrisburg and talk to anybody up there?
With the free time I have, no.
Well, did any of your colleagues?
No, we have our state reps. Frank Ferry represents the fire department.
What does Frank have to say? Yeah, I know there's a problem, because that's all I ever hear from them.
Well, there is. And, and look, I mean, we can beat this one. I agree with you. I think we should be done at the state level.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, you know, without, without us going back and forth.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, we're here.
The problem is that the state knows there's a problem.
Absolutely.
The state has more money than a township, especially a second-class township. And, and they have restrictions on us that we can't pay for firefighters.
Agreed.
But, but hold on a second, but you just brought up an interesting thing that kind of slipped my mind, because as my wife says, I forget stuff.
Sure.
And I, and I started to look into this and then I got sidetracked, because right now we're in contract negotiations. If we can set up Warminster as a regional, what is it?
Fire authority.
Fire authority, and then we could have a fee for that, then we could actually reduce the firefighter tax and make it a fee, and that goes exclusively to payroll.
And that could certainly be a long-term plan.
So maybe that, maybe that's what we have to look at now, Mitch. You and I and manager and.
But the problem is tomorrow, not two, three, four years down the road.
Well. I do, and I, and I do. And I don't have an answer, because there's, the bottom line is, we're a fiduciary for, you and I both live here.
Yep.
Mark lives here, Kathy, Judy, and Janice, and just like everybody here, I'm assuming all these guys behind you.
Every single one.
So as an elected official here in the township, unlike previous people that were here, we are actually a fiduciary for the residents. And the last thing we want to do, you, you do know how close we are to bankruptcy.
I do. I'm well aware of that.
Right, well, something that took 10, 15 years to happen, I can't correct overnight, neither can this board. So it, it's only the third-year image and I can't just say, I'd love to, and I said this before. I think that we, everyone collectively, because I talked to Frank Ferry and I talked to Megan Schroeder and now whoever the next one is going to be, and I talked to other, the senators and everybody else that's up in Harrisburg. I talked to people that are lobbyists up there, and all I ever hear from the people that could, could make this simple for us is, yeah, there's a problem, but basically it's my problem, well then allow me the ability to fix it. Because you're not allowing me the, I, we're, we're restricted to the second-class township code, regardless.
I agree with everything you say on that, but I still have to look at today and I still, not believe, I, we have the numbers. If the fire marshal was here, I'd ask him to get them for us.
Well, you said you just had six new people come in? That's fantastic.
It's awesome.
Yeah, it is.
They make it all through fire school and stay. That's awesome.
Did you, uh, did you guys, have you been down to the high school?
Chief McDonald just sent an email there. He wants to try to work something with them.
Yeah, because I understand, chief, you want to come up too? I mean, come on up.
The, the, the last thing I'll say about the hiring is we have the documentation of what we can afford based on four firefighters, based on the 344, and even talking.
Where'd you get that from? Mr. Schuster?
No, when, whoever was the finance director ran the numbers with the benefits.
Oh, Mr. MacRaeley?
Uh, you'd have to ask.
John MacRaeley.
I'm maybe speaking out of line. Whoever it was, we had all these numbers.
We have actually a real financial director.
With salary and benefits. And you know what? Maybe if we sit down again and we can look at those numbers and run those numbers.
That would be fine.
And see where we're at.
Because quite honestly, Mitch, without getting into anything and just being professional and courteous, we have a real financial director now.
Yeah.
So maybe we should sit down.
It would help if we could see the difference between what we were given originally.
Yeah, because I can guarantee, because I, I never believed.
And instead of waiting a year and a half in between conversations with the board, we should get these numbers and get a couple without violating, or all of you guys and the township manager and hammer these out and see where. We're there every Tuesday night. If any one of you guys want to stop out at any given time and see how we operate and what we do.
Well, we know you guys, we know you guys provide a service and believe us, everyone in the township is grateful. But I wanted to ask Chris, I understand that, that you can get like juniors, junior firemen out of high school.
Juniors.
14.
And they can actually do assist. They can't, I don't think, yeah, very limited, right?
They have to complete part of the fire program. So at 16, they come in, we're trying to get them up to the county for fire school. And at 18, they gotta go back and finish the program to become senior firefighter. So yeah, so Hartsville runs a cadent program that starts at age 14, so they cannot respond to calls and stuff. But that's kind of where we draw all our people. So we, we get 14, 15-year-olds and when they hit 16, then we can move them as a junior. Our problem is we accept from all over the area. We have kids that are from Portland, from Arlington, and we send them back to their fire company because it's a, a relationship we have with these fire companies. It helps fill our ranks and helps them.
Yeah, I understand. What about, I brought this up like quite a few times, and I'm just throwing it out there as a temporary thing.
Go ahead.
Okay.
We'll, we'll take anything, Ken. We'll take anything.
So I brought this up and, and I've spoken to you guys a few times about this. Down in Gloucester County, I happen to know the, the fire, the chief of the recruitment program and the training academy. They're turning away people. They get so many. And I offered for you, to connect you guys.
So Gloucester County's not a county fire department. So is he teaching a class or is he?
Oh, they have, they have an airplane they light up with smoke.
Yeah, so I mean, we have that in Bucks County where, he's not recruiting for individual fire companies.
Yes, he is. Individual fire companies all go there for the training and they do recruit and.
Why don't you schedule a meeting?
I, I would love to. I asked you that three years ago.
And we said that, we would talk to anybody.
But you never, we never followed up again. I didn't hear from you. So I thought you weren't interested. Quite honestly, just like you're saying, hey, this is the same thing, you know what I mean? Like I, I, I offered and then I never heard and then you guys just assumed that, you know, I kept saying, I kept saying to the, to all the managers.
Let's start and set that up then.
All right, I'd, I'd love to, because I, so here's my thing. Let me get back to.
One quick thing about the, the junior firefighters. They're also part of the new legislation. Right now, the problem with juniors is they can't do anything until 18.
Right.
They go through fire school, they have to do their structural burn, and they can't do that till 18. The problem is they leave for college, they don't make it back.
Right.
And if you run out of time, you have to start all over again and they never come back.
Right, I understand.
They're lowering the age to seven, they're talking about lowering the age to 17 for juniors, allow them to finish fire school. So that's good. Another thing, I'll tell the residents this one, they also approved through the House already. We talked about, you know, the tax relief. They passed that you can relieve up to 100% of, you know, the local property tax, the school district tax, as well as the earned income tax.
And that would be wonderful, because you know where most of the taxes is.
Exactly. The Chaminde School District just passed a $1,500 tax rebate for all firefighters that live in the Chaminde School District.
Have you gone to Centennial yet?
I just heard about this actually Wednesday of last week.
Okay, because that's the bulk of the, of the, of the money.
That's real, that's real incentive.
Now, that's incentive, right, because, because we, like, what is it, 90 bucks here or something like that? And by the way, I agree that, that the hours were ridiculous. Yeah.
Yeah.
And well, here's my question, because where I was going with the, with the Gloucester County. Defford Township has an entire woman-staffed fire department entirely during the day. There's not one man there. They're all women and there's other women that, that are volunteering. Have, I mean, have we looked at expanding from just men or we, you know, did we try to incorporate? Because there's a lot of women.
There's two of them right there.
There, there you go. I mean, oh, I know, I know. I'm not saying you did, but what I'm saying is.
We have three women firefighters in our fire department.
Well, that's great, but, but what I'm saying is that have we tried to expand that?
I don't know how to.
Because there's, there's a lot of women around during the day.
We're trying to get anybody and put a billboard up.
Yeah, well, maybe we.
Let's ask the.
Janice, Janice, yeah.
Well, that's one of the questions I had. How, when does a school start? How long does it last?
It's a 200 hours. It starts, the next one starts in January. It's Tuesdays, Thursdays. It's a, a version of Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays.
Monday, Wednesday and Sunday.
Sundays, yeah. So, and it's 200 hours. And that gets you a basic firefighter who can ride your bike and fire truck, can't make any decisions. It takes about 400 hours to get somebody through the vehicle rescue training, an advanced fire class, some, some other programs.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, you have to start somewhere. It's like going to college or high school.
We just don't know how to recruit them.
Right, well, I think we have somebody on this board that could be pretty good at recruiting people.
I can drive the truck.
We're looking for a few good men, you know what I'm saying? Like we open to anybody.
No, no, I understand. And I wasn't being disrespectful to them. I didn't, I, I glanced and I, you were probably behind the guys, the big guy there.
The only other question I had for you was, last year, when you raised the fire tax, it was for career firefighters. If we're not hiring career firefighters off that money, what do we do with that tax? Are we going to go into a second year of collecting that extra?
Uh, we're, we're in, we're in budget. We're, we're putting up, we're working on the budget right now, so.
Is that staying in, coming out?
I'm not going to say one way or the other right now.
If it goes out, are we going to rebate the homeowners the year that you stop?
Possibly.
Yeah, but, yeah, just curious to see.
Well, first of all, regardless of, that was, that was something that was brought to, to us, saying that, yeah, that, you know, you can't, you can only spend one mill. So that whole premise of, well, we have all this money, was not going to get us that far. It was only, Mitch, I'll tell you what, I remember those, those, those ridiculous spreadsheets that didn't really.
Yeah, if you can get us an updated one so we can match it.
Well, yeah, and, you know, and quite honestly, you know, you guys as a collective body, I know that it's tough to go up to Harrisburg, but I'd like to see every one of you guys, instead of being in here, well, you can come in anytime.
The township would burn down if we all went, just so you know.
Well, during the day, and we don't, and I know we have, Chris, don't you have like three or four WMA people that are, that are allowed to respond to fires?
I have two now.
Two?
Two, two that are available. I have one that just isn't available and we're just too busy.
Right.
So we have two that come in.
So, you know, I'll, I'll talk to Tim, that's because I sit on that board and we'll see if we can't get a couple more for you.
We can ask everybody here to contact Harrisburg yourselves. That's a big problem.
I talk to Harrisburg constantly, trust me.
We need everybody.
But, you know, and, and not just us, like, I'm one person out of, well, with, you know, adults and children, yeah. And the county, right. I mean, I don't know how many's in the county. It's, but just here, it's 33,000 people. Of course, they're not all adults. But if everybody talked to their state rep and their state senator, we might get somewhere. Because when I tell them, they just go, yeah, I know, you're right. And then, and then, you know. Just like, just like when you guys come to me, it's like, I know there's a problem, then I go to them. I got a problem.
Can we end this with, before you finalize your budget, before the end of the year, so I know you can revise it, let's run the numbers based on the grant, based on the millage, and let's see if we can put four firefighters on this fire truck. and let's see if we can put four firefighters on this fire truck by January one starting.
Well...
That sounds like a good goal to look towards.
And instead of last year's Christmas, you know, we'll have a Christmas present this year.
It's three months.
You can pay for the party and we can celebrate.
Now that we have a financial director that knows what he's doing...
John, are you listening?
Do you hear that, John?
Yeah, John.
John, this part's for you.
So anyway, now, I'll tell you what, let me put it to you this way. When our, when our financial director runs the numbers and we sit down with everybody, I trust them.
That's fine.
All the other, the other numbers, I always challenged them and nobody had an answer for me.
They were all wrong, too.
So they were never correct or accurate, and that's why I was so hesitant. Because when I would ask a question, I never got an answer.
Alls I ask is, if you keep us in the loop and you come back to us. If you'd came back to us six months ago with new numbers ran and said, this is not happening and this is why, we're all big boys and girls here, we'd get it at a certain point. But as it stands right now, decisions are made about the fire service without input from the fire service.
Well, Mitch, if you remember like the first time Ken had, Ken and I had met with you guys, all right, so we had, Greg Schuster was here.
Yep.
All right, and if you saw what, you saw what happened with the budget, we were in a deficit in a budget, which is illegal. Illegal in a second-class township code. So we had to scramble and do what we had to do to tighten our belts. So the information we were given by him was all incorrect. So now that Tom is here, we've got Lisa, we've got a great crew, we've got John Rainey, everybody's worked, we're all working in the same, we're all going in the same direction.
We have professionals here.
Right.
But it's two years for you to say that to me.
But we still don't have any.
Because it took two years to build a team here that are professional.
And we all sat in this room during COVID, eighteen feet apart, and went over a bunch of this, and we really had zero...
Yeah, well, we didn't have all our professionals here. We have a full staff now, and they're, and they're, and they're very professional.
Yes.
And we trust them. And that's why we're not on the cliff of bankruptcy anymore, because of the staff.
Can I make a comment, please?
Sure.
Yeah. It's been a pleasure to work with this team, and we are working as a team, we're not divided, even though we come from different parties and different backgrounds.
As it should be.
Right, as it should be.
Exactly.
And I'd like to make a motion, I would like to be the liaison, if it's okay, to be the connection between the fire department and the board. I'm new, so I don't know if that's allowed.
Well, I don't think we need a motion for that, do we?
No, that's just something you can talk amongst yourselves.
Yeah, we can, we can talk, I don't have...
I think that should be put on the next agenda, that we can have discussion for that.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I noticed, Mitch, there's some recommendations and things on the back of this report. Recommendations were made in two thousand sixteen, and this was printed in two thousand eighteen. Have there been any updates since two thousand eighteen?
No, because it takes, you know, Harrisburg works, it'll take another ten years for them to come back with another, sorry, on that, you know.
There's still working as some of the things now, there's still legislation coming on to try to pass some of those things about the relief association.
Oh, yeah, I see those two thousand sixteen where they said recommendation, what they've done, that was two thousand sixteen.
They're looking at some of this stuff, but some of it's coming from...
But here we go, again, it was done, they started in two thousand sixteen, they printed in two thousand eighteen, so in...
And it's like it's over.
And, you know, five years or six years later, these guys up here that could give us all relief, didn't do a damn thing.
Nope. We got a grant.
And you know what, and, 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 trust me, like I said, if that, if that fire authority is legal and it works, I'm sure the residents would be more happy than that. We can reduce, it could almost be a trade-off. We can reduce the fire fund tax and we can put it right into a fee that goes directly to payroll. And, you know, if, if it's legal, and I don't, I'd have to talk to our solicitor about that.
Yeah, it hasn't passed yet.
So it hasn't even passed yet?
It's up there now for approval, and, you know, some people, like anything else you said, people in a ad take, you know how that goes.
So now, now is...
So has it been assigned a number yet, a house number?
It has, I don't know the number, but it is up there being worked on.
So, I'll tell you what, you know what I think we should do? I think we should find out what the house number is, and then we should put it out on our website, and we should ask all the residents of Warminster Township, not just me, and not just you, and Kathy, and Mark, and Janice, you know, because again, five people, okay, whatever.
Agreed. In the meantime, before your even next meeting, if we can get some numbers together and have a meeting of our own with you guys, and see if it's something we could really do, there's no reason...
I'll be happy to sit down with you guys.
And if they extend that grant, there's no reason we can't, we can push this out, they give us another three years on that grant.
Yeah, but, again, Mitch, grants, grants...
If we can't fix this problem in seven or eight years...
I get it, but grants are sucker bets. And, and, and hold on, because when you look at, the way I do, and you're a businessman as well.
I do.
When you look at the township finances from a business perspective, that's, that's like hiring thirty people to go out and do your inspections when you only have enough for twenty. And so it's easy for everybody to come up here and say, you need to do this, and what I look at it as a fiduciary for the residents of this township, and I'll say, and I'll say this about the police, when everybody tells me we need police, we need firemen, I say, yeah, I know we do. How do you want to pay for it? Because we're restricted in how we can fund it. And, you know, and I know you said you just raised taxes last time, but the residents don't want to hear that.
No, but it's the reality of it at times. I mean, no one wants to hear it.
Yeah, every, you know, look, materials go up, labor goes up, equipment goes up, costs of everything go up, but nobody wants to have taxes raised to pay for that.
But they're not picketing and burning the school district down because they raise taxes. I think people are, they're realistic enough to know that, it's not like this money is going to, you know, do something silly, it's going to their protection.
Well, yeah, I know, but you know what'll happen? Is that all of a sudden, it's silly season, like, it's going to happen next year, and all of a sudden, we raise the taxes eighty-nine percent. And that's all anybody sees. They don't see that we, and they look at their bill and go, oh, my taxes went up. So, so right now, this governing body is actually getting a lot of things done, but people won't know that. Alls they care about is that you raised my taxes and you're out. And then, everything goes down the toilet.
I've had, and I'm not going to say a lot, but a decent amount of people approached me and say, oh, they raised the fire tax, why'd they raise the fire tax for you guys? And when you explained it to them, they were like, huh, does that make sense? Like, we get it.
Right, but the regional authority would be much better, because it won't, it won't go into a fire fund that can go, well, you can do any, whatever you want with it, except payroll. So this way, it's just like, just like the, the stormwater fee, that's only for repairing and maintaining stormwater and making it better. It can't go anywhere else.
If they even levy the extra mill, that'll be nice. I'll take either one, from a Harrisburg point of view.
Well, yeah, if they give us, we need, we need, we need two or three mills. We need three mills to do it.
They do.
And honestly, Mitch, that's, that's the number. We need three mills.
Well, let's sit there and look at the numbers and see where they're at.
And if they did, I would be the first one to vote yes.
Well, let's, next month, hopefully, we'll have an answer for this next meeting.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, in the short term, just wanted to roll back to that proposed legislation. I think it would probably be appropriate for this board to draft a resolution, set up that, and send it on...
Let's do that.
On behalf of the township and its board supervisors.
I'm okay with that, yeah, absolutely.
I agree, that's good.
I think, yeah. I mean, it comes from five people, and they all know that, they, look, I've talked to every, everybody that'll listen, even the county people, and, you know, you really know where the problem is. Problem is that fifty years since the last property reassessment.
It's exactly it.
Yeah, and you know, and then when you go right across county line road, they have paid firefighters, but if they raise their village a quarter of a mill, it pays for three firefighters.
Exactly.
But, but we're, we don't have that. One mill gets us, what, three hundred and some thousand dollars, right?
That's, that's the ultimate answer, is they have to reassess.
Absolutely, I know. And, you know, it's fifty years.
It's crazy.
It is crazy. But again, it comes down to, here's, we're at the bottom of the food chain. I mean, it doesn't get any lower than this as far as elected officials. We...
Oh, I beg your pardon.
That's no, no, you know what, everybody knows that.
Now, volunteer fire...
Saying is that, everybody comes in and beats up on the township officials, and we're going, okay, but my, my hands are tied. Harrisburg tied my hands. What do we want me to do? What do you want us to do? So I would be more than happy to have John run some numbers for us when we can sit down with him. Because I'll actually believe his numbers.
And if he needs any of the numbers from our end, the fire marshal has all of it.
Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So anything you need number-wise for what he looked at as far as what we projected for firefighter cost, training, uniforms, anything that would be part of that.
Continued training, everything, insurance.
Yep, he has all those numbers together, and you can plug in your benefits and anything that would come from your end and come with a real number for salary.
That's, that's what I would hope. Because quite honestly, I asked, when we, before, before we started subcontracting our paving, which now we're doing miles and miles of road from professional pavers, and our, our public works guys did a great job, but they weren't pavers and they were only doing three miles of road. But I had approached our finance director, now remember, I can read a spreadsheet, because I operate three businesses, and I said, prove to me that it's cheaper to do it in-house. And they missed probably a hundred dollars per employee and plus about another two hundred dollars in equipment and vehicle, and they just omitted all that and said, see, it's cheaper. And I said, well, what about all this? And then all of a sudden, they were like, oh, let's, let's just let that go away, he'll forget, but I didn't. So, because again, we're fiduciaries for the township and the residents here, and, you know, we, we, we have to maximize, get the biggest bang for our buck, because, and again, we're maxed out at fourteen mills.
Yeah, understood, understood.
It's, it is a dilemma, Mitch, I agree with you.
And saying, we don't want to come here, you know, hat in hand every year begging for this.
And you know what? We don't want you to...
We are only here for the residents of the township. At the end of the day, it's all we want.
And we all appreciate that, you guys do a fantastic job, you really do.
And Mitch, you've been terrific tonight.
You have.
You have. I thought I was going to have to roll out the steel cage.
I came in here with very little to say, I'm done with the arguing, you know what I mean?
Thank you, thank you.
Well, we're, we're kind of done with the argument, too. We need some, some, some sort of solution, and that's the best way to do it.
Yeah, and my only...
But don't think we don't care.
Communication, that's all I could say over and over again. I really want more of it. That's, I think, where the biggest problem was lacking.
And I'm volunteering.
There you go. Awesome.
I'm right down the street from you.
Before you go, I always make it a point to recognize when there's a former supervisor in the room, Scott DeRosa, because it's good to see him back in the room, Scott, and Scott went through the rigorous training to become a firefighter. I don't want to say at an advanced age, but in his late twenties. And, no, thank you, Scott.
So he's getting that little jab at Scott.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks, thanks for everybody coming in.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
John.
Yeah, do we have a suggestion before you guys...
Oh, hold up, guys. Guys, come back in, please.
There's a suggestion here.
John's got a suggestion.
Oh, you can have that take all the calls with you.
That's okay. Listen, just a suggestion, you know, you know, billboards...
John, John.
Oh, okay. John Briobas, six, seven, four, Joseph Bauten.
Thank you.
Just a suggestion, you know, billboards, you know, are good, but a fourteen and eighteen-year-old person really isn't looking at them, and most of the time, when they were looking at them, it was when they were getting built and no one wanted them, but...
You're right, yeah, exactly.
Okay, so the next thing, I think, is we had that Warminster magazine, which is a really good thing, because it hits fourteen thousand homes every time it gets mailed out.
People do read it, you're right.
And they do, and it sits on your kitchen table.
We will...
The fire department would explain, which is one thing that I never could understand, was what responsibilities in, in the fire department started, going in, they would have. Like, say a junior firefighter would have this, this, and this, and so-and-so would have that, eighteen-to-twenty-fives or whatever it is has two-hundred-hour class, these are the requirements you need to become a firefighter, we need, we need volunteers, it's a future thing, you know, we know that you're talking about tax credits and all these other things, and that's all...
We'll figure that out, but in the short term, we need, we need...
Well, short term, right now, we need help.
You know what, that's a great idea, Chris, and where's Mitch?
We need, you know...
Oh, there you are. I, I think that's, we need to put that in there every, every time that news gets out.
It's not expensive. I think I pay like, like five hundred bucks and I get, I get, you know, some sponsors.
Well, yeah, but this would be, they wouldn't even need to pay for it.
I like how many hundreds of dollars this year, doing like Facebook ads.
Well, Facebook, not everybody's wanted either, I'm not a good Facebook...
Yeah, but Mitch, we'll put that...
We're not looking for somebody who's easily doing it.
I know.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
But you'll take Janice though.
You guys are arguing there.
Take Janice though.
Yeah, hold on a second. So here's what I think. I think that's a great idea to go in the newsletter every month. How many times put it out? A couple times a year?
Break the responsibilities down.
And the fact that we need people, because you know, I bet you half the residents don't even know that you're short some copies of that. I never say it, Chris. I don't say it.
Joe has it in the newsletter.
For any of that stuff?
There are some college credits in Trask River. We did a thing where we put on Facebook and trying to get the younger, because you need the young kids. I'm too old.
They're not on Facebook.
We had it on Facebook.
Yeah, they're not on Facebook anymore.
Yeah.
Snapchat and Twitter.
Well, luckily, our deputy chief is like a pro at all that.
Yeah, they don't do Facebook.
He put it on Facebook and wherever he, we'll say online, because I don't know all the terminology. And we do a fund drive mailing every year that lists all that. We do a lot of stuff that goes out.
Can I make a suggestion on that fundraising?
Yes.
Don't have a third party do it. Because I, hey, hold on a second. I'm just, this is a suggestion. I'm not telling you what to do. But what a lot of residents said to me was, they said, we don't even know where that money's going. It says Trivos.
We had a hard time this year. The bank we'd been using in Warminster wouldn't do it for us anymore.
Oh, no?
Because they would get it, open it, and deposit it. And they said they couldn't do that anymore. None of the banks would do that.
Couldn't you have it sent to the firehouse and then you guys just deposit it? It has to look more so that it's coming to you guys and not to some strange...
I can listen to you, all the events all my firefighters have to do this month compared to what they did last month. I can't ask them to do it anymore.
I'm just, all's I'm...
I get it.
You know what? Chris, all's I'm saying is that a lot of people didn't donate because they said they think it's going somewhere and you get a piece of that.
We did get a lot of calls this year. We changed companies trying to get a better return.
Right. And that was... And it actually probably backfired a little bit.
No, it was close.
We're always...
Yeah, but it doesn't change a lot. People that, as crazy as this sounds, like the same people, because we keep track of who did the same people every year.
I think if we give you a little more, maybe we give you a little more space, maybe on the front page this time around on that newsletter, that we desperately need firefighters, volunteers. We'll try it. Hey, look, I'm open for anything. I'm open for anything.
Like if they put, they put like each area, you know, like if he's a junior firefighter, the 14-year-old, what he would be doing, things like that. The mother father would look at it, hey, there's no re-scouts or there's nothing with this. This might be a great thing. How about we send...
John, I got a great idea. I'm going to give you an application administratively. You could leave that for us. That would be awesome.
Listen, I, you know, I have no problem doing stuff like that, you know, just telling...
No, no, but that would be great if you had this idea.
I talk to them. I need that all the time when I...
Yes, yeah, I think we need to. It's devolved now.
And if you guys would do that, I'll...
All right, all right. We're having a conversation. Most results here.
The only other concern is we knew we had a volunteer problem across the country, not just fire service. Everyone had volunteers, whether it was literally to the townships.
Right.
And then COVID hit, and then nobody wanted to go back to work. And now we want those people to volunteer, but they don't even want to go to work now. So this is really going to...
It just exacerbates the problem, yeah.
Look at baseball volunteers and soccer volunteers.
I know, and again, and it's worth the while.
See people that do everything. I know. I've been there.
I've been five years this year, so I know all about it.
And believe us, we don't want this to fail, right? We're very proud of both of our organizations.
Yeah, we don't want it to fail either.
Our company is going to celebrate its 100th anniversary next year. We don't want this to fail, and we're trying our hardest to maintain it. It's the daytime is the problem.
Right. Well, we already agreed, so it's not to have this devolved into conversations.
First page on the patch, please.
Yeah, first page on the patch, that we need volunteers. So Mitch, we'll get our numbers. We'll get in touch when we meet.
Thanks.
Just say yes.
We, you know, just desperately need firefighters.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you guys do. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McKee had asked for something to be on the agenda at the next meeting, and I didn't catch it.
I had a resolution.
Well, it was with Janice and Mrs. Dutton.
About creating a liaison for the fire company. So I think we should do that. It should be on the, to create that decision.
Tom, for the resolution, too.
Right. It's actually, it should be a reorder.
Tom sent it. Don't we do that?
No, there's no liaison. We can talk about that.
All right, can we have some order?
I just didn't want to do it.
So here's, I think that should be a reorder. So we'll do that for the new... I know, it's only two months.
I just didn't want to do it on the fly tonight.
Right. No, I agree. I wasn't going to let that happen.
Oh, yeah, I was talking about that.
All right, Janice, we're still in the meeting here. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll talk.
Thanks, Mitch.
All right, Mitch.
I'm sorry.
All right.
That's called a sidebar, right?
Yeah, but not during the meeting.
I'm sorry. Forgive me, everyone.
Mitch was like Jackie Gleason tonight. He didn't want to go.
Yeah.
Well, at least he's leaving on a positive note. That's good.
All right, so hopefully, John, wherever you are, we'll have to get some, pull some numbers together. Thank you. All right, so that's public comment. Consent agenda, it's 20 after. All right, so the consent agenda, let's move on. Consider approval of board supervised minutes dated September 8, 2022, which I know everyone looked at. Consider approval of cobblestone estates, letter of credit release, consent to sell Warminster Township-owned equipment, vehicles, and surplus materials on municipal bid?
Yes.
Yes, that's what, the old police cars and dump trucks and stuff like that.
Yeah, we've got the list, and I know this one is in the binder.
Yes, yes, I saw it.
I saw it.
And lastly, consider approval of Resolution 2022-12 authorizing the allocation of foreign fire insurance taxes to the Volunteer Firefooters Relief Association, and they all left. So...
That, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Chairman, if I may. That number 2022-12 may be different than 12.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, can I ask for a brief explanation on that one?
Okay.
Yeah, John will take care of that.
Okay.
Let's bring the fire company.
Oh, no. So do you want to have that explanation now?
No.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion second.
Second, okay. Any other questions or comments from the board, from the public? Okay, being done, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. All right, finance report, Mr. McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make a motion. I'll ask for a second to adopt, approve the bill list dated September 15, 2022, in the amount of $1,012,159.09, along with the supplemental bill list dated September 15, 2022, in the amount of $1,017,071.25, totaling $2,029,230.34.
So moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
I made a motion.
Okay.
Is there any other questions or comments from the board? We all looked at that. From the public? Okay, being done, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. McKee. All right, you're up, John. You want to, is this going to be another hour?
I have not. I feel like everyone clears out by the time I get off.
I know. See, it's the financial report, and the most important part, everybody leaves.
Except my neighbor told me he watches every week, so, hi, neighbor.
I still got some good news. We actually have a little not-too-great news, but...
Uh-oh.
So in your package, you should still have a sticky tab that has the summary that I'm going to read off of. Good news, revenues are up 5% still, $558,000. The one change is, I've constantly been reporting for probably a year and a half that transfer taxes have been going up. Last month, we were up $77,000 through that point, through the end of July. Through the end of August, we're actually down $204,000. So there were some big sales that happened. I looked back, we're still up from 2020 and from 2019, so overall, we're looking good. It is one of the hardest things that, you never know what's going to be sold or not.
Right.
EIT's still up 13%. Real estate taxes are up $60,000. Talking with Bobby, we are 99% collected, and she still hasn't sent out final notices. So once they go out, a whole dollar of Russian money is going to come in to try and finish that off, so.
And again, I want to thank the residents for being so forthcoming with the payments.
Yep. Business privilege, mercantile tax, everything else besides the transfer tax is up from last year, so we're looking good on the revenue side. Expenses, we're only up 1%.
That's great.
$85,000, and that's with salaries, benefits, and all these other things going into it.
Yep.
So that's really great to see. We're...
That really is, and that's a testament to the staff here.
Yep, and we're 50% of budget, where through the end of August, we should be at 67%.
Right.
We do have some backloaded expenses that are happening literally right now, which we're about to go into, of the MMO payments and the fire relief payments and stuff like that that came in, now they have to go back out.
Right.
Before we get into those, just talking about the 2023 budget. Some, the hardest things that we have to look at are wages, employee benefits, and insurances. They're the most volatile that we have. We're still in the middle of contracts, so we kind of have to estimate those things. We have gotten insurance for workers' compensation. Volunteer firefighters are not covered by our normal workers' compensation insurance. They're covered by the state because of, a couple of years ago, there was a Cancer Presumption Act that if you get cancer at any point in your life, it goes back to workers' compensation. So we did get that rate renewal that went up $5,000. We're almost 11%. Our actual workers' compensation, which, the good thing about this, it becomes an actual, once we get an audit done, and we did get like a $40,000 refund this year, but that estimate is actually going up 7% or $22,000.
So they want half of it back.
Yeah, exactly, of course. One of the big ones...
Never break even with that.
And this is the whole budget process, is we did get a property liability insurance. That went up $69,000, 17%.
Wow.
We've been warned for over a year that this is to expect it, so it's not like a giant shock. I do have an email, I was going to read just two sentences from it. One of the problems is from the reinsurance. The way, we're in a self-insurance pool, so everyone kind of takes on the same risk. If Horsham has a disaster, we're kind of all in the same pool of, all right, we have to pay for that. Same thing if something happened here, they have to pay for us. What the insurance trust does is they reinsure. So anything over $1 million, it goes to reinsure up to $25 million, and then they're responsible again for any differences. So the property reinsurance are responding to catastrophic losses. We had floods, wildfires, wind, by increasing premiums. Tropical storm Ida caused over $36 million in losses to 17 members of the trust. So it's 17 out of 68 had giant losses. I can tell you right now, Upper Dunlins, the biggest loss the trust has ever seen in the history of it. Their entire building, I think, needs to be wiped out and rebuilt.
Is that, that's not divot, is it?
Yes, they...
Oh, it is divot?
So we're kind of experiencing some of that. Also, the really big issue that it's a new insurance that they broke out this year, used to be kind of blended with liability, is cyber insurance. I'm sure everyone knows what's going on in the news. So cyber insurance are responding to the ongoing increase in cyber and ransom attacks. So that was another huge hit that we took, that made up this $69,000 increase.
The cyber insurance is what Jack did up there?
Yeah, that was a big part of it.
In addition to the cost of the insurance, we are also, divot is requiring us to take certain steps ourselves. In addition to paying for the insurance, there will be additional costs to the township in 2023 to protect our network.
Right.
Yeah, the past couple of years, we've had to do a lot of surveys with the cyber insurance through the underwriter, just showing that we do have some security to regulate any kind of losses.
Right.
But...
Well, I haven't gotten any emails from the state about unemployment claims for a couple of years now.
Honestly, I get emails from all of you asking for wire transfers.
Yeah, wasn't that wild?
Yeah, we all got one a few years back.
Phony unemployment claims.
So some good news. We got some grant money in recently.
Nice.
So going back to what Mr. McKee's question was about the fire relief money. The state gives us money that we literally have 60 days to turn back over to the relief associations, not the fire companies. They have to go through their own state audits. They're only allowed to use the money for very specific things, mainly equipment, insurances. Not insurance for the fire company, but insurance, like life insurances for the firefighters, very specific things. But the good news was that went up $46,000 from last year.
Nice.
So that's really nice that they have that money. Now they could reinvest it in any kind of equipment they may need.
Right.
The state pension, we did get that money, and we have 30 days to turn that over to the MMOs. Those checks already went in the mail. So that's good. So our MMOs are paid. That actually did go down $11,000 from what we received prior year. The way that's calculated is, it's money that insurance companies from out of state collect. There's kind of a tax. If you're, an insurance company from Maryland, you have to pay this tax. It goes into a fund. And then every municipality puts, does a report called AG 385 that says, this is how many employees we have. You have to work full-time for six months. And then you get unit values, and then they just say, all right, here's all the units within the, or within Pennsylvania, divided by the number of, the amount of money that's there, and that's how we get the money. Just a sign note, police are worth two units compared to us regular employees, so. So that's how we were able to get that. The really great news is we got our second round of ARPA funding.
Beautiful.
So in total, we got $3,396,545.
Wonderful.
There wasn't an unexpected additional $10,700 from other municipalities that just never did the paperwork to get it. So what the state did is redistribute that to all the other municipalities. So we did get an extra $10,000, so just under, right under 3.4 million.
Helps to pay attention, huh?
Yep. So what we're actually doing is, that money's getting transferred into the capital fund. We're not using one-time revenue for operating expenses.
Exactly.
That's going to go into our capital planning.
And that's been a problem for years, yes.
And that's really, the best way of using this money is to invest in infrastructure that's going to last a long time.
We've had, we have some of that actually spent already. I believe the Ben Wilson Center started already, didn't it?
Yeah, well, they haven't, they're getting their permits, but yes, that, the funding for that project is based on the...
It's some ADA corners.
Maybe a earmark.
Yeah, and $350,000.
Other stuff in the pipeline. We have an infrastructure committee that meets periodically.
And I think we have some lighting at the park going in, some new electrical services.
Cameras.
Cameras, right.
And when the, when the federal government first gave it out, they restricted the money a whole lot to water sewer projects, Wi-Fi, broadband, stuff like that. Well, then they ended up adding an additional $10 million revenue loss assumption, where it pretty much allows us to use the money for any governmental service, which is everything we do.
Right.
So we are able to use it for what we think is appropriate.
Okay.
And the infrastructure committee, we keep the public updated time to time on what we're talking about.
Yeah, we have something coming up, I believe, in the next month. We have several that are close to having some meat on the bones.
Coming in front of the board, yes.
Yeah, but right, we don't have, it's not like, well, you know, the handicap ramps have been done. We did, that was 350,000 for the, and the Ben Wilson project is starting, and that bid was 500, total for the three phases was 500 something.
Right.
Excuse me. We have many other projects that we're waiting, we're collecting information on, collecting data, collecting quotes on, that we will bring to the board as they mature through that process. That would include the family bathroom at the library. It would include the repairs and improvements that are going to be, needed to be paid to the fuel dispensing unit at the Public Works yard for the, both the above-ground pump and the tank. We also have, behind that, we have security cameras. We've been talking about that for a while, that we want to put, we want to improve the security camera deployment that we have throughout the township, centralize it and improve it. There's, the list goes on and on. I think the next two we're going to see will be the gas and diesel at Public Works and the bathrooms at the library, although we're still having a hard time getting architects to talk to us about that.
Okay. The library is not ADA compliant right now.
Well, that, yeah, we're hoping to get, so the idea is to get an ADA-compliant family bathroom instead of working within the confines of one of the two existing bathrooms.
And update, and update the existing bathrooms.
Well, I think we, at this point, we're going to leave those two alone and designate the family bathroom as the...
Not update the ADA, just update, freshen them up.
Yeah, I mean, we're...
Yes. Thank you.
I mean, they...
They're like that state.
Yeah, yeah, right.
We want to get them a citizen.
Yeah, let's, if we're going to, as I always say, if we're going to do it, let's do it right.
Yep.
And that's all ARPA money. No expense to the taxpayer.
Right.
And the lighting over at Warner Park, and that's all part of that as well?
Yes. Yeah, that'll come up before the board. We'd probably like to have that done before the seasons start next year, so that'll come up soon.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Yes, and we have, you know, Andrew and Gilmore and Jess, everybody's been working on all these things, including that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, no problem. This money, along with some of the other grants we're expecting to get in, hopefully by the end of the year, they're reimbursement grants, is a good seed to start a capital plan of not just a couple of years in the future of saying, this is what we plan on doing. So when it comes to, do we have the money to do this project? We could say, yes, we do, or no, we don't. Or we could, we can move projects up or further back if we need to.
Well, we can be very, very strategic in how we borrow money for projects because we have something to back it up.
Yes, exactly.
Great.
All right, any questions?
John's got a comment. I'm sorry, Marcus.
No, it sounds good, John.
I just want to say, you have a way of giving a financial presentation and make it really interesting. Nobody is asleep in the room. Great job. Thank you.
We need to move him up on the agenda.
No one turned their television off for that, John.
Nobody's in the room.
Someday I'm going to have to have you have a look at my books at home.
Thanks, John. Thank you.
I glazed over a little bit, John, I have to tell you.
All right, there's no unfinished business. There's no new business. Professional reports. We'll start with Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I have one item I just wanted to go over. We touched on it briefly through some emails this week, is that the Shenandoah Woods demolition is now underway. It's been underway for a couple of weeks, and the houses are coming down, and the detrist is being removed from the site. So we're working with the RDA on, which we've forwarded funds to the RDA recently for them to start paying the contractors. We're going to start seeing some of those invoices. It's all good news. Everybody thinks that the project of the RDA, the RDA thinks is going along very well. I do want to get a photograph of the board at the site with a piece of demolition equipment. And they are also, Jeff at the RDA is working on the possibility of some state funding to help supplement the 1.7 million...
Oh, that's great.
So he did on our behalf apply for some funding sources earlier in the year. We're hoping to hear from them before the end of the year, but the work does continue in that regard at the site. So these long waits, I know this board has been waiting many years for something that is now happening, that can be seen at the site.
Fantastic. I hear them every morning, and it doesn't bother me a bit.
No.
Dropping dumpsters, and I'm like, good, there's another one to fill up. Chief, but you must be thrilled that that's all coming down, huh?
Shenandoah?
Yeah. Okay, sorry, Tom.
That's all I have for the notes. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, Mr. Holber.
Yes, thank you. I just have one item to discuss. It's a matter that's going to be coming before you shortly. Earlier this year, the State General Assembly passed Act 57. It's going to require you guys to adopt a resolution dealing with real estate taxes. So what this does, the state law did, and what your resolution will do is, first time, not home buyers, but first time property owners in the township, if they don't receive their tax bill like in a timely manner, there's like a mechanism now to waive the fees, the interest, the penalties that get attached from late payments. This is coming from the state. It's nothing we have a say about. You got to pass a resolution between, I think the dates were October 8 or October 10 and November, or not November, excuse me, January 9 of next year. So it's just something we have to do. I just wanted to give you a heads up about why we're doing it, why it's going to be coming in front of you, because, you know, the general idea is you're responsible for your taxes, and this has been, this is kind of shift in Pennsylvania law with putting a little bit more onto the municipality and taxpayers with regards to tax bills, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure Bobby is, she's fantastic at that stuff.
Yeah, I don't think you're out of worry.
I don't think we're going to have a problem.
I think Tom and I were talking about where, that's not going to happen in Warminster for a while.
We're going to have to be real concerned with that right now.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. All right, Mr. Kanner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Scott and yourself already went through most of the projects we're working on on the first page. Warner Park Lighting, Public Works. In fact, I really like how staff's been operating lately, where we get, we do, like Mr. Scott said, our due diligence. We did investigative report out at the Public Works. We figured out what we're doing and come up with a plan and then present to you instead of trying to go all over the place in every public meeting. So there's a lot going on behind the scenes, and you'll start seeing those projects, as Mr. Scott said. One that I'm not sure where, and this will be discussed probably early next year, but the funding for, we're working on regional basin modifications over in the Street Road Industrial Park. I have a plenary design done. At some point, we'll be presenting that to you and moving forward with, you know, whether that's going to be done internally with Public Works or we bid that out. But that's another one I think might be on the, I was going to update the committee on that with the next time we meet. So that's moving forward as well. So we got a lot of work going on behind the scenes. The only other update, or item I wanted to point out, our engineers report is a big project to be coming in. I've gotten calls already over at 700 York Road. I guess that's the old Pathmark, Pathway?
Pathmark?
Pathmark.
Lidl, Lidl grocery store has withdrawn, pulled out, sold the property. We spent a lot of time on that project, I think three different plan reviews. So there's a developer, I think out of Colorado, that's coming in with Tesla to try to do a dealership service and repair all combined in one for Tesla. Unfortunately, these several variances, they're trying to reuse the existing building and parking instead of coming in and building new. We did have a staff meeting. I think things are done differently on the East Coast and the West Coast. I'll just leave it at that. But there's a learning curve. It's very steep. He's going to work through that. I believe they're coming to planning commission. I'm not sure how it'll go, but eventually they need to go zoning. If there's some negative feedback, I think we'll need to have a staff meeting and try to work through if they want to just redevelop the site. There's a lot of improvements that we had worked through with Pendot, York Road, connections to the adjoining shopping center plaza. So I'd hate to see that be all left off the table after a year, and I know you want those improvements.
Right. Craig, I had asked...
Yeah, Craig, I asked Tom yesterday, they haven't put any zoning application?
No, they have, I did confirm that they did not.
Okay, but they are, they are going to planning, they?
They.
They have, Scott's plan is scheduled to go to, I'm sorry, Craig, go ahead.
Yeah, they're scheduled to come.
Okay, but no zoning application.
Most applicants, I think, would rather regroup and try to work out some issues, but I think it's good for, let them give some feedback.
Yeah.
Let the process go, and so, don't overreact to anything you hear. They haven't filed for any relief yet, they'll have to. You'll actually get that application, probably hear about it, and we'll update you as needed, then, so.
Okay.
And that's all, that's all the updates I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you, Craig.
All right, what are we doing for next month?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, if we want, whatever your pleasure is, we can do the one scheduled meeting on the 3rd, or if you want to have a second meeting in November for the preliminary budget, or a little of each at each meeting, it is your pleasure. So I think the threshold issue is, if you want to tackle.
October 20th, I mean, October. I'm just saying.
No, November.
I'm sorry, I mean, I mean two meetings in November, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Judy.
So the first meeting is the 3rd, which we'll definitely have to have. The second meeting would be the 17th, which would be the preliminary budget. Will we have it ready by then?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can we make that decision that night, if we need to have that meeting or cancel it? Do we have the preliminary budget? Do we have to have that second meeting?
I think you have to, we'll have to go through it, because we're gonna have to advertise it.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, I think it's gonna be a matter of whether you can get the preliminary budget for the meeting on the 3rd, is the question.
Oh.
Right, so if we don't need.
That's gonna be a little hard to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, I think we should have the meeting on the 17th, because we'll have that, and then we can tweak it and advertise it and then pass it.
We're gonna do two meetings in November then?
Yes.
Okay.
That works for me, okay.
And I think we do that every year at budget time.
Yeah, we do.
Didn't last year.
So there is gonna be two meetings in November?
Yes, the third in the.
We'll probably wind up until December, that's correct.
Because of the advertising, you'll have to have two in December.
Right.
Yeah.
But there's not gonna be one on October 20th.
You just have one meeting in December after the advertising time.
If it's, with any objections, without objection from the board, should we cancel the second October meeting?
Yes.
That's where I was going.
No objection.
No objection. Okay. That's where I was going when I asked. Oh, yeah, okay, all right.
That's why I asked about October 20th.
Right, no, 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 I don't think it's necessary, because we need time, our staff needs time to go through the budget, so we have a solid preliminary budget that we, that we don't have to make major adjustments to. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, thank you, Tom. Public comment? Johnny? John, you're the last man standing here. Well, it's not necessary.
No, 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 no.
It's not necessary.
I have something for you, just to take, to take your minds off of the normal.
We woke him up? I know.
Okay. Listen, there was a show when I was a kid, was Mayberry, okay? So when I sit and think about myself, growing up in Warminster as a kid, walking with my little fishing rod down to the bridge at Davisville Road and Street Road, and going under the bridge and finding the crawfish and all those things, it always takes me back to a happy time. So when I always reflect and go back, and it makes, puts me in a good mood. So the object of this whole conversation is, let's leave the little Mayberry in Warminster. Okay, right, Mark?
Yep.
Let's not make it, you know, a huge big town, let's make it a good town, and leave a little bit of that country pumped.
Does that mean the chief's Andy Griffiths?
Well, I didn't want to go there.
Chief?
I left it all myself, you know? You know, there you go. Have a good week, everybody.
Thank you, John.
Thank you for the anecdote.
All right, so, yeah, other than I'm looking forward to putting together a solid budget, our team is well adept to do that. So other than that, I have no other comment for tonight. Kathy?
I'd like to wish everyone a happy Halloween. Remember, be careful, drive slow, because there will be a lot of kids out if the weather's nice, and that's all I have to say. And great meeting, by the way, for everybody, all the professionals, everybody involved, great job. Thank you.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to wish everyone a happy Halloween, and welcome everyone to stop by Revere Terrace on Halloween. While the neighbors are out, fires are going, we all give out full-size candy bars. It's a good time, anybody in the neighborhood, please do stop.
All right.
That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Judy?
Ditto, happy Halloween, and be careful while you're out there, and let's pray we'd have less rain this October and more sunny days like today. So thank you all for paying attention.
You're welcome. Janice?
I'd just like to wish everybody a happy October, and be watchful of all the children that are out playing, because the weather's took a nice break today, seen the kids back outside after all that rain, so. Enjoy the fall with all the pretty leaves.
All right, thank you, Janice. So motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.